Dear Heavenly Father, we just thank you for this day that you give us, God, and we just thank you for this weekend to get with family and just be thankful for the things that we, we get to enjoy, Lord. For God, I just ask you to watch over us and protect us through the rest of this year, God, and just keep us safe and strong. God, let us know that Jesus is reason for the season. We just thank you again, watch over each person. In your holy name we pray, amen.
Pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Call the roll, please.
Gilbert.
Here.
Thompson.
Here.
Goins.
Here.
Slater.
Here.
Mason.
Here.
Ledford.
Here.
Rogers.
Here.
Winters. Beatty.
Here.
Hughes.
Here.
Alford.
Here.
Cry.
Here.
Blake.
Here.
Collins.
Here.
It's thirteen present and one absent.
Thank you. Like now to entertain a motion for the approval of the minutes.
To move.
Second.
Second.
Open for discussion. No discussion. Call the roll, please.
Gilbert.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Goins.
Yes.
Slater.
Yes.
Mason.
Yes.
Ledford.
Yes.
Rogers.
Yes.
Beatty.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Alford.
Yes.
Cry.
Yeah, yes.
Blake.
Yes.
Collins.
Yes.
It's thirteen in favor, none opposed, and one absent.
Thank you. We'll now go to the county mayor for the report from the mayor, please.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Nothing really to report tonight. I did want to mention Doug Collins. I don't think anything has been said about Doug lately. But most of you probably know, a couple of weeks ago, when he had a incident, I don't know if you'd call it a heart attack or not. The reason I wanted to mention it, in addition to talking about him at home doing better and recuperating, the AEDs that you all had put in the hallway of the courthouse and the annex, that and the fast action of the office staff, they needed to run out in the hall and get that AED, is probably what saved Doug's life that day. And of course, they tuck him on and he ended up having a stent installed and so forth. I understand he's recuperating, doing well now, but it was scary that day when all of that was going on. A couple of people called, said that it was in my building, they wondered if it was me. I couldn't figure if they were excited about it or saddened about it, but either, either way, it wasn't me. But it was a scary time there for Doug for a while, so I just wanted to mention him tonight. That's all I have unless someone has something for me.
Anyone have any questions for the mayor? Thank you. Consent agenda. Like to entertain a motion for the approval of the. Commissioner Thompson, Commissioner Hughes, any discussion? No discussion? Call the roll, please.
Gilbert.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Goins.
Yes.
Slater.
Yes.
Mason.
Yes.
Ledford.
Yes.
Rogers.
Yes.
Beatty.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Alford.
Yes.
Cry.
Yes.
Blake.
Yes.
Collins.
Yes.
It's thirteen in favor, none opposed, and one absent.
Thank you. Well, now to go to reports from committees and our districts, we'll start on our left. Commissioner Rogers, please.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Everything is well in the seventh district. I have nothing to report tonight.
Thank you. Commissioner Ledford.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. All's well in the sixth district. Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Commissioner Slater.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have nothing to report tonight.
Commissioner Goins.
Fifth district, doing well.
Commissioner Thompson.
The chairman, nothing to report.
Commissioner Gilbert.
Ms. Chairman, nothing to report here.
Commissioner Mason.
Thank you, Chairman. The only thing I have is the road committee that was scheduled for Thursday. We need to reschedule that meeting till January. And I will announce the date after getting with Tom Collins, road superintendent. Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you. Commissioner Collins.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. We have a legal legislative committee meeting tomorrow at eleven thirty here in the commission room. I know we also have a lot of groups and individuals that, you know, provide during this time and during Thanksgiving with meals and just time and service. And one of those groups I want to say thank you to is Director Scott Oliver at Bradley Healthcare and Rehab. He and his team led a group that distributed eighty-six meals to some of our homeless individuals last week before Thanksgiving. And just want to say how much I appreciate Director Oliver and his team and just thankful to live in a community that believes in service and, you know, giving in that capacity. So thank you to everyone who, who did engage in that. That's all I have. Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Commissioner Blake.
Hey, Ms. Chairman. The finance committee met earlier today and tweaked the HCI committee's funding recommendations. You have a spreadsheet before you that details the finance committee's recommendations. Mr. Chairman, I place this recommendation in the form of a motion.
Commissioner Slater on the second.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I have a substitute motion to my, Mr. Commissioner Blake's motion. I would like to increase the City Fields Community Garden upgrades from the eleven thousand nine hundred dollars that the finance recommended today to twenty-five thousand dollars for City Fields Community Garden upgrades. Other than that, everything would stay the same, Mr. Chairman.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Open for discussion?
I'll come from HCI.
No.
Being no further discussion? Yes.
Arnold School, one thirty-five, you took it eighty?
That's correct.
Is this gonna be?
Sorry. Is this gonna be for the school? Was this for the school or was this for the community?
A little bit of both, I believe. Obviously, the school kids will use it, but it was, in the application, it was mentioned that it would be for the community. Arnold, I guess, Eighth Street, Harrell Street, basically the community. So a combination of both, Commissioner.
And Michigan Avenue, not Michigan Avenue, but, oh, yes, Michigan Avenue, did they get less than what they wanted to? Because I've had some folks call me and say, hey, why are they lowering that? And they had watched the meeting and you said a hundred thousand.
Yeah, they requested twenty-five thousand for a shade and the recommendation from the HCI committee was to take the, the recommendation was twenty thousand. The idea being that their PTO would have some skin in the game.
All right. And they said that you had recommended a hundred thousand and then they had dropped it to eighty. Is that correct?
That was on Arnold.
On Arnold.
Arnold.
Did you recommend that they put it at a hundred?
Which one are you talking about again?
Arnold.
Arnold. Arnold requested a hundred and thirty-five thousand. The HCI committee recommended a hundred and thirty-five, but the finance adjusted it to eighty thousand.
Okay. See, they said a hundred thousand and I see it's eighty.
That's the finance committee's recommendation.
Okay. All right, thanks. We're now getting ready.
Ms. Chairman, just one question. What, Milan, what was the reason we're going from a hundred and thirty-five to eighty? I'm just asking.
Well, we thought it would be consistent when we talked to the chairman of the HCI and why they, I call it a haircut, you know, when you reduce the amount for Hopewell, all the other schools, and they were basically all in some way, some form, doing playground work, I think it's shades or whatever. Well, if school A, we'll keep the names out for a second, school, if you're asking them to engage with their PTO, then you should ask all the schools to engage with their PTO. So we wanted to be consistent with that.
Yeah.
Anyone else? We'll now have the vote on the substitute motion by Commissioner Rogers. And can you repeat the substitute motion? I'm sorry. Yes, go ahead.
Oh, we're good.
Okay. All right, let's go ahead and call the roll, please.
Want to discuss it first?
Well, open it for discussion.
Are you calling for the roll?
Oh, okay. Open for discussion, please.
I'd like to know why you want to increase itself or garden.
Yes, sir, Mr. Alford, Commissioner Alford. I think City Fields and the Community Garden upgrades, when we look at the health wellness initiatives of this county, is one of the forefront, most leading initiatives in one of the, in one of the districts that literally has food insecurities in that area. There is not a grocery store, there is not a place to get healthy foods in that area for many, many miles. And the work that City Fields does to create community gardens, to be able to provide food, wellness, and healthy foods in that neighborhood is a great initiative for this commission to get behind and back. I also believe too, if I'm not mistaken, that City Fields is one of the only organizations in the entirety of this time that's ever given money back to the commission that they haven't used in the past. And so I think that, that, that City Fields is a fantastic organization that we should be able to support.
Ms. Mochter, did we give them money for a garden last year? You know, you remember?
We did, Commissioner Alford. However, this, this year's request is actually to enhance the two gardens that are already there that were funded last year with HCI funds.
Enhance them?
Yes, that's correct. I believe that they hope to install an irrigation system and some other enhancements. Certainly, an irrigation system will help ensure that the gardens provide and are sustained throughout the summer months.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Josh, have you been over there and seen the gardens?
I have.
Do they have a greenhouse?
I don't believe that they have a greenhouse at this time.
That's all for me.
Anyone else on the discussion? Call the roll, please.
Gilbert.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Goins.
Yes.
Slater.
Yes.
Mason.
Yes.
Ledford.
Yes.
Rogers.
Yes.
Beatty.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Alford.
Yes.
Cry.
Yes.
Blake.
Yes.
Collins.
Yes.
It's thirteen in favor and none opposed and one absent.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Just to add, now that that's gone, Lori will send out the letter to the organizations here shortly and get that process going. I want to thank the HCI committee. I think they met, what, four or five times over the last couple of months. So I just want to say I appreciate the work that they did getting us to this point. Next, Ms. Chairman, the finance also voted to recommend approving an amendment today to pay off the library debt by moving two hundred seventy-three thousand from Fund One ninety-two, fund balance, to, yeah, the HCI fund. Ms. Chairman, I moved to accept the recommendation and put that in the form of a motion. Thank you.
Do I have a second? Second on Commissioner Goins. Open for discussion?
I'll just add that this completes, this is a twenty-year of bond, our loan, that we've been paying, quote unquote, about fifty percent of our, it was a fifty-fifty deal with the city back from, what, two thousand eight? So it's always good when you make that final payment on any kind of loan. I think it was about, what, over two million, Mayor? I wouldn't hear when it happened, but it was about two, two-point-one, two-point-two million. We've been paying about a hundred and twenty to a hundred and fifty thousand over the last twenty years. So this final payment here, we're debt-free with respects to that obligation. We can enter into a new one.
Commissioner Gilbert. What was the total on that?
Two hundred seventy-three thousand. And that's coming from the fund balance.
Any other discussion? Call the roll, please.
Gilbert.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Goins.
Yes.
Slater.
Yes.
Mason.
Yes.
Ledford.
Yes.
Rogers.
Yes.
Beatty.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Alford.
Yes.
Cry.
Yes.
Blake.
Yes.
Collins.
Yes.
It's thirteen in favor and none opposed and one absent.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Mayor, that's what we're talking about in finance today. That allows you to go ahead and get that done. Instead of waiting till the next voting session with the fifteenth, that's fourteen days of interest we just saved, so that's why we did it tonight. All right, the last thing I have, Crystal. You've heard a lot about this TIF program. I guess, I got a letter from the comptroller the other day and I asked specifically, does the county have to approve the TIF in order for it to go into place? And all they said was all the bodies that have a taxing authority, which I'm assuming we do, but they never answered the question. So I guess, if you could get back whenever you can, does the county, this legislative body, have to approve a TIF in order for the whole thing? Or can the city go in it alone?
We'll definitely get back to you on that. It sometimes is a more complicated answer and it's probably why they
Why the comptroller sent me the
on that issue because we have had that come up, depending on how the pilots are written, depending on how it's structured, depending on how the documents look. So I will get back to you on that, but I'm, I'm assuming that's
Well, as you can imagine, it's obviously important because if they, if the city can do the TIF all by themselves, they put it, then our way of going about it is different than if we have to approve it in order for the whole thing to go into. So it's a big deal. That's all I have. Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Thank you. Commissioner Alford.
Second district's doing well. I was out by the airport the other day. Looks like our drag strip's coming alive again. So just wanted to remind people, we've got a good drag strip on the backside of the airport. If anybody's interested in working on their cars.
Is that in the city or county? Commissioner Hughes, please.
Ms. Chairman, I have nothing.
Commissioner Beatty.
I have nothing to report either.
Thank you. We'll move on down to the approval of the agenda. Do I have a recommendation? Commissioner Slater, do I have a, Commissioner Hughes, open for discussion? Being no discussion? Call the roll, please.
Gilbert.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Goins.
Yes.
Slater.
Yes.
Mason.
Yes.
Ledford.
Yes.
Rogers.
Yes.
Beatty.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Alford.
Yes.
Cry.
Yeah, yes.
Blake.
Yes.
Collins.
Yes.
It's thirteen in favor and none opposed and one absent.
Thank you. Agenda item A, Commissioner Tim Mason.
Ms. Chairman, this is a resolution authorizing Bradley County mayor to execute a utility easement across the Bradley County property located at seven fifty-two Pleasant Grove Road Southwest and two eighty-two Landfield Road Southwest. And this is found on a map and parcel number zero five five zero zero seven point zero zero. And you can see that on page six if you need to place that in form of a motion.
Do I have a second? Commissioner Hughes on the second. Open for discussion?
Ms. Chairman.
Yes.
I did pass out a revised resolution that he's referring to, and I want to point out the change that's in the revised. It says contingent and only upon satisfactory resolution of all notice and or legal requirements related to the landfill operation agreement with Santec by the Bradley County Mayor and Bradley County Attorney. Republic has asked for us to hold off until around the first of January. So we're asking you to go ahead and approve it, but I have to hold off signing it until we get those issues totally resolved.
Commissioner Gilbert, what's the reason?
Yeah, Commissioner Gilbert, we have an agreement with Santec and it's got language in it that we just want to be careful that we don't run afoul of. And so we're just trying to make sure that we dot all our i's and cross all our t's with regard to giving them notice, giving them an opportunity to respond with any issues that may, that they may have. We have done that, but we haven't gotten anything in writing yet back with that. So we, we wanted to be able to move forward because I know they're trying to get, move forward with this, but we also did not want to do that without making sure that we have everything done that we're supposed to. So it would be my recommendation that if we approve it, it have that language in it.
Thanks. Yes.
Mayor, so is this a contingent on this motion? In other words,
You're approving
has to be satisfied in order for it to go in. So all we're doing is approving contingent on
You're approving, authorizing me to sign it, and my signing it is contingent upon getting that back from Republic.
Any other dis, yes.
Ms. Chairman, may I ask the, Mr. Sanders, how this is going to affect him? And I know he's got some contractual obligations himself, and I'm wondering how it's going to affect him. Mr. Sanders, please.
As all of y'all know, I'm Bill Sanders. Um, I've read and I understood the resolution that you presented to you. My problem is, we've got a short time and everybody probably knows that. I have read also the lease with Santec passed down to Republic. And there's nothing in there that I can tell that they can say that in a legal way that they could stop this except you. That puts us in a real bind because they've had this, they had the notification, if I correct me if I'm wrong, two weeks since the seventeenth. Nobody knows it, nobody's seen it from our contact, the engineers that's going to evaluate it don't even have it. It would be an obvious thing that I have witnessed before that it's being postponed to get our contract to run out. And we're going to miss a several, several million-dollar development at this point if that happens. So we have got to, if you prove it as suggested, we have got, we've already spent a pretty good bit of money. We've got, we have got to still do the topo, the engineering, the TVA, and negotiation contract and to do it before closing. And that's going to be awful hard to do if we're waiting on Republic to say, you can follow your law if you want to. If I'm wrong, I apologize, but I did read it. I had to, I've done a lot of research to be sure that we were preparing for, to move quickly, which we've got to do. We've got to start tomorrow if we're going to make the closing deadline for the contract. And what I hear is going to be very difficult to do that. I understand what you're saying. I think, if we had more time, I'd certainly agree with that. It's the time factor now. It's killing us. So if you have any questions, let me know because
Commissioner Slater, please.
Mayor, Crystal, how, how long do you anticipate delaying it? I mean, how, how much time are you going to give them?
Well, the, the whole point of trying to do it this way is so we didn't have to delay it. They requested to delay it till January. We added this language in hopes that if you all approve it tonight and give the mayor the authority, as soon as we get comfortable with everything from them, the mayor can go ahead and sign it. So I can't tell you exactly when that would be. Obviously, at some point, if they don't respond to us or are non-responsive, I don't anticipate that. But if they are, then there would be a time where we would have to make a decision based on the information that we have. But the reason for trying to go ahead and do it tonight was you all giving him the authority. It's just if, if, to put it simply, if, if things went south and the mayor and myself were uncomfortable with it, he could choose not to sign it and bring it back to you all. I, I would not, hopefully that won't happen. I can't say that it wouldn't, but hopefully that wouldn't happen. So that's what we're trying to do. So, I mean, obviously, you can approve it the other way if you would like, but that's why we're trying to do it this way.
Commissioner Blake, please.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. One quick question. Do you have, Mr. Sanders, do you have a date, whatever, that basically if you get to that point, this is a no-go project?
Right now, we're, we've got till the middle of January.
Middle of January?
January. I don't know if that can be extended. Sometimes when you're dealing with contracts like this, that's pretty, pretty good size, they have to have a good reason to extend it.
Sure.
And if we don't have the sewer even started, and we're talking, I think we're talking a lot of the time because we started this several months ago. Not blaming anybody, I'm, a lot of it, you're just, just routine stuff you had to do. Surveys, soil borings, and, and all of their pre-construction checks. Then we will not make that. It's going to be difficult unless we get a response shortly. But I was sure hoping tonight we'd had a response within two weeks. I know it's holidays and that's a good, good reason, of course. If we sign it like you have it, we're going to be either forced to wait or we're going to be forced to spend a lot of money going ahead. And if we get everything ready to go and all the surveys, I mean, all of the information and approvals that we've got to get and the topo and the engineering, et cetera, we're going to have a considerable bill and it's going to be thrown out the window. And that's the reason, one of the reasons we're liking to go ahead and meet the deadline on the contract.
All right, thank you. So it's also accurate that you requested to be annexed in the city based off of this, right? I was at the plan commission the night that you were there talking to the city plan commission and
Yes.
Didn't they approve your annexation request that night or?
There, the, the planning commission has approved that and the annexation and the zoning request, and it's going to the city council on the night.
On the night, so they're
And it's been totally approved with the planning commission, and we have no reason, we have heard no feedback that it won't go through.
Right. But you did all of that
Yes, all of that's done.
Right, so in other words,
The things that I mentioned.
Listen.
Uh, but there's another thing. The buyer, and this is one of the few projects that we sold, we normally buy it, do it ourselves. But they have spent, it costs a thousand dollars a boring. They spent, they've done fifty-six borings. It costs twenty-five thousand dollars to announce a survey for a tract that big that you actually surveyed, forty-five acres. So we would be liable for that because we have defaulted.
So
And that's another
Mr. Sanders. I, I appreciate all that commentary, but really.
Well, I
What I'm getting at is that you asked the city to annex and rezone for this project. So in other words, Yes. if this goes south, better like the word.
Subject to, well, not a subject to, that is correct.
Let me ask you this.
That's correct.
Can we rearrange the wording a little bit? So in other words, our friends over at Republic basically say, if we don't hear from you by January one, we're going to assume that you're okay with it. In other words, don't let them do the delay tactic. If we don't, and that's, to me, we've done it before, right? Where we said, if we don't hear from you by January one at noon, we're going to assume all's good for Mr. Sanders. Can we do that?
Um, we, we can. I, I certainly would much rather have agreements and everybody on the same page so that there could never be any issues about that. But yes, we, we could certainly give them a deadline. And, and we have been pushing them this whole time to get a response. And we could get one tomorrow. So that's, you know, we, we don't know when that's coming. They have said, we're kind of pushing it up the chain, is what they have essentially said. But yes, we could.
Okay.
I would feel much better if we
Well, I want you to feel good. So we have one more voting session. I think it was December the fifteenth. If we don't have an, a answer from Republic by then, maybe we could revisit that.
We absolutely could, yes.
And, and then put some, some more language to it, right?
Yes.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Chairman. That's all I have.
There's another thing I want to bring up. We have a hundred and twenty-seven acres around that area, including another forty-six acres. It's very close. All of it's within three minutes of the interstate exit, and one of them's three, four minutes to downtown. And if, if this can stop our real starting development, then we have no hope for the rest of it. I mean, we let one company, I'm not threatening anything, I'm just telling you the realities of, of a development. If we blow this and every, and the way we look at it, okay? I may be wrong. We haven't tried it. It hadn't happened and think, hopefully it won't happen. But if we, if they hold up that, why's go keep them from holding up everything else? Because their reasoning is wrong. Number two, we got it right. Number one, the capacity. Well, we've got the engineering utility. Mr. Clark himself wrote me a letter and said, there is plenty of room based on the projections of the, of the development. There's plenty of capacity and it's almost doubled. And we're increasing it from four inches, not six, four inches to eight inches, which quadruples the volume. So if that's, the other second part of the letter that we got from Republic was, we don't want to deal with extra P. We don't want to deal with extra people. I couldn't understand that, I didn't respond to that. So you see what we're faced with and uh. I'm, I don't mean to put pressure, but I'm just saying what has to happen if we're going to do it, that's all. And I'm asking you to consider that, there's nothing illegal holding it up that I know of, if I'm wrong, tell me. Uh, and, and I will apologize, but. I think we're asking for either a total, I don't know if you can do this or not, but a pledge that we can go forward. If, if they don't respond by that, trend would be, from what we've seen, it would be extended again unless you take act. Uh, and. Time is still cut down pretty close. We would have to start tomorrow morning trying to get this extended because no way you're going to get the topographic. And all the other things that I mentioned done and a contractor billed it. It won't happen in fifteen days.
Comis, Commissioner Hughes, please.
I would like to assure it some way before we spend another sixty, seventy thousand dollars over there for nothing. That's my problem and uh, whether or not we want to go ahead and try to get extended further or I don't know what to do.
Crystal, how, how long have we been talking to Republic or trying to get something from them?
Um, my email. Was. November the fourteenth is when I officially reached out to um, Republic Sand Tech. And said, I'm reaching out to you regarding the request that was made for a sewer line easement across a portion of the property. I've attached the drafted documents, can you please let the county know as soon as possible the official position of Republic Sand Tech on granting of this proposed sewer line easement? So that was on um, November the fourteenth. Um, they did respond on that same day saying that they were going to include their general manager and basically push that up the chain. Um, I followed back up with them on November the twenty-sixth and said, do you have any update? This is on the county commission voting agenda for December one. And that's when they responded um, today and said, they're still waiting on feedback from their environmental engineering people. Could we postpone it until January? So that's what precipitated us changing the resolution to add the contingency language.
Crystal, I'm going to play my ignorance real quick. Republic manages the landfill, correct?
Yes.
And we own it.
Yes.
May I add that the city engineers got it back to us in two days on their, on their analysis of it. It's been two weeks or more.
The, the sewer lines it's ran through, how, I've not seen any drawings, but I assume it runs pretty close to the.
We have drawn, just need to look at.
The road department there, which would be way below where Republic's actually working at. So I don't understand why they would have, I don't really understand why they would have you say so one way or the other, but I.
Well, I, I can read it, there, there is one provision of the contract um, that does talk about encumbrances of the landfill property. It says, this agreement and all the rights of contractor shall run with the real property and the county will not in any manner sell, alienate, mortgage or encumber. At least the, the interest we're trying to give easement is of, an encumbrance legally of some sort. Um, unless such purchaser, transferee or lien holder takes subject to all terms and conditions of this agreement. Evidence of which shall be furnished in advance to the contractor, which is what we're trying to do. In form and substance satisfactory to the contractor. In any attempt to sell, alienate, mortgage or encumber the landfill contrary to this provision shall be void as to contractor. Which would give them an argument that this wouldn't apply to them unless we go through the process. So I'm trying to keep that provision from being a problem.
I haven't seen, must have been the old lease or something, I don't see, I didn't see that. I, it said on that eleven, eleven-two, page nineteen, that the contractor couldn't, could not do those things. But it didn't address what this county could do, didn't mention it at all. That was in the lease that I read, that was the same lease that we had with, with originally. Has that been changed, I guess?
I, I'm reading directly from the one that you have.
It's current, oh, okay. Any more questions that I?
Crystal, another question, I know that you were talking about January first of having that. Could we set that, that time for them to come back to us to maybe the fifteenth of this month, month?
Well, we certainly, Commissioner Blake had mentioned that and I think that's an excellent idea. The mayor and I can certainly give you an update on the fifteenth, which is voting session as to where we're at on the project and what we've heard. Um, and you could certainly take additional action at that point if you so chose, if it's not been signed at that point. And if we've not gotten where we need to be, that certainly could happen, yes. I don't know if that meets their timeframe or not, but it could certainly happen, yes.
My explanation is, is if we're talking about January the first or whatever, it's not, the time is out. And uh, whether or not we can renew the contract because they can reclaim, reclaim the money they spent if it's our fault. And it is our fault if we don't do it by the January fifteenth and we sign this contract May twentieth.
Mr. Olford, please.
Yes, Ms. Freiberg, is Republic aware of all the drilling and checking that they've done? And would it be that the city has okayed everything also or is Republic aware of everything that they've done to move this project along?
I, I don't, I don't know that. Um, I know they did reach out to Republic before we did. Um, but I, I, I think Mr. Boone had reached out to them uh, probably substantially before the county did.
I didn't hear that, I'm sorry.
I, I believe that you all reached out to Republic before the county did to discuss.
Yeah, we've been, we've had a, ever since we started over there, we've had a representative from Republic with us.
So I, I don't know.
They met with all of our meetings, they were there, there, and, and that leads me to believe, you know, maybe, I hope I'm wrong. That uh, taking the lead this long enough, we're gone and hey, that's true.
Have they made?
For no reason that I can.
Have you made them aware of your recent uh, city things where they've done all their due diligence? You've done, have you made the city, made Republic aware of what the city's doing as far as approving your sewer project and all that?
Yes, we told them this. We are building it. They will own it, if, they will own it totally, the easement. They will be responsible for the sewer, any problems, they have to prove it before they accept it. They have to, once it's operative, then they are a total one hundred percent responsible for anything that happens. It's the way, it's what it is, it's there, it's their ownership. We're not involved except for one tap.
Miss.
So, yes, sir, we've really explored that, we know, yes.
Mr. Sanders, let me ask.
Tried to cover everything we needed to cover and I'm sorry I misread the contract, that's very odd for me to do, but I might have.
Mr. Sanders.
Contracts were very well stated.
Mr. Sanders, if I could, if I understood you correct, if they get the easement, the, the sewer line will be given to them. They're responsible for that repair of anything that may happen in the future, is that correct?
Absolutely, it becomes part of their whole system.
Does that mean at this point, because it doesn't belong to them, that anything occurs and I'm not the county attorney? That would be us to fix it at this point?
Yes, so the way that works is if you have a private line, um, which is why there's not an easement there. If you have a private sewer line and something goes wrong with it, you're responsible for it. Once they take it, they basically take over that easement. Um, and then they take over the responsibility for it um, as well. So yes, that's, that's the way that works. They, as he said, they don't take it over though until they're happy that you've built it the way they want it. It's in good shape and at that point they take it over.
Does that mean that Bradley County would have to repair that or Republic?
They wouldn't have to at this point if it was on their side, if it was on the road department's side, it would be our responsibility, but.
They uh, they required us of course, which is good. They've required us to use one of their approved contractors, which is normal. And we have, I have contacted several of the contractors that are interested. So I don't, I don't know them, but uh, that's what we're going to use, an approved, pre-approved contractors. That apparently they have done work for you before or they're responsible enough to be on the list. They are under bond as well. They will be bonded and if they don't do it right, they got to fix it. So that doesn't give much room, you know? For era, uh, that I see. We basically are not involved in it once we give, sign the contract to the, to the construct, contract.
Thank you, Mr. Sanders.
So on the fif. Commissioner Goins, please.
So on the fifteenth, I guess it'll be on the agenda to do what he's wanting to do, is that correct? No?
No, um, if you approve the revised language, um, it would only be on the agenda if there's still a problem. If we haven't gotten it resolved by then, we would give you an update. And so you could take additional action at that point. But if, if everything goes without issue, you won't see this again.
Are you saying ma'am, that uh, you, they have the le, le, leadway to hold it up? It's not a drop dead situation if they don't make the, make their time, right?
We've not given them.
We can't extend it again, I mean, they can't make us intend it more.
We, we've not given them a drop dead. What I'm saying is that the commission would be giving the mayor the authority without coming back to them to go ahead and sign it.
That's the way I thought we presented initially, I'm sorry.
That, that is, that is what it would be. Uh, if there is an issue, then he would not sign it and would bring it back, so.
What we're giving them totally, they don't respond, then they don't need to respond by the deadline. They won't too, okay, if they don't make the deadline, then they're out of it, basically, that's what, I understood you.
We've not given them a, a deadline, that is something that the commission could do.
Right, hopefully if you pass. What's this, leave it open-ended. Put a, engineers together in four weeks, five weeks.
What, I think the, what we're talking about is on the fifteenth and we would re-address it if it's not signed by the fifteenth, we would re-address the issue. December. Oh no, fifteenth of December is the only other voting session that we have between now and, and January one. So there's one more voting session that if it's not signed, we could further address this issue.
One way or the other, we can go home or start to work, right?
So if, if it's not signed on the fifteenth, we could vote to do what he's wanting to do, is that, is that correct? I'm just wanting.
You can, um, I would at that point tell you where we are and what we've done legally and, and what, yes, but yes, you could.
That's the point I would like to make, I don't know how strongly they are against it, I have no idea. I just know that when we talk, we don't get much response.
Any other discussion?
It's, it, the engineers, engineers may be loaded up during Christmas time, you know, and they didn't make that deadline. I would like to ask. As a, as a compromise. And that, but a suggestion that if we get it approved. That it will be done by the fifteenth, we can start to work if they don't respond. Then that makes it where they can't just say. I don't know if they're doing it, but I know we could have done it in less than two weeks, could have had it in two hours if we had to. I'm just trying to get a clear path to start. And I can't get a clear path to start if they get another shot at it and you hadn't approved it. Then that's leaving us out another two weeks, can't afford that.
Just chairman, I call for a question.
Sorry.
Call for the question.
Mr.
Don't further go.
Mr. Chairman, did you, or Milan, did you make a substitute to that, to add that verbiage to that? Does it need to be added or?
Been a, been a call for the vote. All right, no further discussion.
My understanding is the new one is the one that's being presented, the one that was passed out is the one.
Yeah, but do we need to add the verbiage about the fifteenth? The fifteenth?
No, the fifteenth is not in there.
That's what I'm saying, do we need to make a substitute motion to add that verbiage in it?
I mean, you could if you want to, um, I, I certainly, the mayor and I will be here and we will give you the update at that point, but you can if you would like.
Mr. Chairman, let me make a substitute motion to add that verbiage to where they have to the fifteenth to give us a answer one way or the other. I don't know how you word that exactly.
I, I think it would need be worded that if we don't have the document signed, we would revisit the issue on the fifteenth.
Is that satisfactory?
That's not what I said. What I was asking was if, in other words, we're going to go forward with the, uh, optimistic way of thinking in the sense that if we don't hear from you. Then all's good, we'll take a no answer or no reply as a yes. No is I want to force it a little bit, of course. I mean, I sat through many meetings with, and they've done it to other people. So that's what I wanted to do. But you said that you were uncomfortable with that and that's fine. And the next voting session is the fifteenth. So the way I was thinking is come the fifteenth, if we haven't heard, there will be a motion that basically says January one, we haven't heard from you, we're going to go forward. In other words. You know, that's, that's kind of where I think.
Yes, and, and I'm going to agree with it.
I, I get it, I mean, they probably sent it over to Arizona to their corporate world and it's on the fourteenth floor, their sky rise over there, I get it, but.
Yes.
On the fifteenth, they're going to have the ability to, they're going to know what's going on, they're going to have to on the fifteenth.
Yes, I, I would agree with that, yes.
Now, we, we have a substitute motion, can we get the clarity on the substitute motion?
You went and heard it for me.
Is there, was there a second on the substitute motion?
No, we don't have a, yes, Goins I think gave the second on it.
Thank you. They've got a copy of it up there.
Let's call for the question, we've, we're coming up for a vote, can I need a clarity on the substitute motion? And then we got a second.
I understand the substitute motion and correct me if I'm wrong, Commissioner Hughes. Is that it would be the resolution as passed out with the addition that we will bring back an update on December the fifteenth if the document is not yet signed.
Is that correct?
Correct.
Is that satisfactory to you on the second? Open for discussion. Be in no discussion, call the roll, please.
Gilbert.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Goins.
Yes.
Slater.
Yes.
Mason.
Yes.
Ledford.
Yes.
Rogers.
Yes.
Beatty. Hughes.
Yes.
Alfred.
Yeah.
Cry.
Yes.
Blake.
Yeah.
Collins.
Yes.
Thirteen in favor and unopposed and one absent.
Crystal, thank you very much. Thanks, sir. Agenda item B, Commissioner Josh Rogers.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Hopefully this will be a little bit quicker and easier. So a resolution authorizing the Bradley County mayor to negotiate and enter into a facility service agreement with Centos Corporation for janitorial and cleaning supplies. Or the Bradley County EMS for a term of thirty-six months with a unit rate for each item. You can see this on page seven, I place this in form of motion.
Second.
Second from Commissioner Slater, open for discussion. Be in no discussion, call the roll, please.
Gilbert.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Goins.
Yes.
Slater.
Yes.
Mason.
Yes.
Ledford.
Yes.
Rogers.
Yes.
Beatty.
Yes.
Yes.
Alfred.
Yes.
Cry.
Yeah, yes.
Blake.
Yes.
Collins.
Yes.
Thirteen in favor and unopposed and one absent.
Thank you. Agenda item C, Commissioner Mike Hughes.
Mr. Chairman, this is a resolution providing approval to the Bullens Environmental Solutions LLC. Under the Jackson Law for the construction of a new solid waste processing facility to be located at twenty, two forty-one Lindell Lane Northwest, Charleston, Tennessee, three seven three one zero. This will be seen on pages eight through fourteen, I put this in form of motion.
Second.
Got a second, open for discussion. Be in no discussion, call the roll, please.
Gilbert.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Goins.
Yes.
Slater.
Yes.
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 Rogers.
Yes.
Beatty.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Alfred.
Yes.
Cry.
Yes.
Blake. Yes.
Collins.
Yes.
Thirteen in favor and unopposed and one absent.
Move along to communications from the audience. I will recognize and allow five minutes to anyone wishing to speak. Anyone like to speak? No one wishing to speak? Legal. Go ahead, sir. Need, need your name, need your name, sir, and, um, you, not to address any commissioner by name. You can look at them or whatever you want, but not address them by name. Go ahead, sir.
Anthony Boone with Bill Sanders and the sewer line. Um, I'd like to thank, uh, the commission for the suggestion on a, a date to try and hold, uh, Republic accountable. Uh, we have engaged them for many, many months since we began this. Um, they've been invited to these meetings continually. They have not showed up. Um, we've furnished them with every bit of information for them to be able to make a valued decision and they have just dragged their feet continually. Um, also, the sewer line, as, uh, Mr. Sanders said, does, uh, trans, transfer over to Cleveland Utilities and, uh, the construction will be done by a bonded, um, agency that Cleveland Utilities approves. Really, thank you for your consideration for that.
Anyone else would like to speak? Thank you. No one else desiring to speak. Upcoming events, legal and legislative committee tomorrow at eleven-thirty here at the courthouse. Um, Christmas parade, December the sixth at six P.M. downtown-